All right. And you're sending the embed code to Kai? All right, cool. To everyone who was logged in to the Zoom meeting, both on Facebook and our attendees who are signed in, we are getting this up and running on our Facebook page. We're doing something a little bit different today in that we're having a public hearing. Members of the public are in commission chambers. So we've set it up to where they will be able to hear you and see you through the Zoom meeting. You will also be able to see and hear those who are here for the public hearing. So if y'all just give us a few minutes while we're getting set up, I'm going to leave everyone's microphones muted. So there's not too much talking while we get it set up. Thank you.
Rachel.
Yes, sir.
This is Judge. Look, do I leave this thing? I just got, do I leave it muted? And sleeve up and while we're all from 5:00 up to 5:00 or what? Do we stay online?
If this hearing goes right up till 5:00, we will go straight into that meeting. If it, if this hearing ends before then, we will end this meeting and then start a new one for the 5:00 pre-commission meeting. You will use the same login code and password you were sent. So you'll just, you can log off and then you'll log right back in with that same login code and password.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Hey, everyone tuning in on Facebook and to all of our attendees in the meeting. This is Rachel Gamble with Make-A-Bid Public Affairs. We're doing a test to make sure that the audio is working on our website at makeandbid.us. You can let those without Facebook know they can watch this meeting even if they don't have a Facebook page at makeandbid.us. We're about to get started here in just a minute. Thank you. If y'all will bear with us, we're addressing some, some technical issues real quick with this new technology we're using. So if y'all will just bear with us for a moment. If you are listening to music, as lovely as it is, if you could mute your microphone, thank you very much.
You make me feel so young.
What's wrong with listening to music while we wait?
Not that music.
My bad. I thought I was on mute. I don't know.
Uh, not.
That's a blessing, though. That could have been so much worse.
Yes, it could.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if you could give us a mic check on your microphone, please?
Mic check, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1.
Is everyone able to hear Mayor Rickert?
I think he's on another mic.
Kind of muffled.
I'm not sure. Give me a thumbs up if you can hear Mayor Rickert. Give me a testing one more time, Mayor Rickert.
5, 4, 3, 2, 1, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, testing, testing, 1, 2.
Okay. They've got it.
It's very low bar.
It's muffled.
Yeah, it was. No. You're not going to hear it in your headset. There might be. Okay. There might be a couple seconds of delay as we go through this. We are adjusting the audio settings now to make sure this is working. Thank you all for bearing with us as this is new technology we have set up and we are using for the first time.
Testing, 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. Yeah, Watkins could hear me.
I could.
I will.
Yes, sir. Just a note for everyone who is watching through our website or Facebook. We are fixing some audio issues as we are using a new technology system to run this public hearing. We will be going back live momentarily. Thanks for bearing with us.
Okay.
There you are.
Am I, am I on, am I on yet? So have we got this sound on? The internet as well? Good. I'm getting, of course, a delayed sound back here that, that I'm not sure there's anything we can do about that. Okay. Right. Well, I think I can disregard that. I'll just talk twice. And if you hear me twice, you'll know why. Once in my voice and then once over the PA system as well. This is the efforts that we're making to accommodate COVID-19 and social distancing along with the desire to have a public hearing and input over a very important topic. The topic we're here to discuss this afternoon is future use of the Virgil Powers Elementary School and the Fulton Baptist Church, as well as a vacant parcel that is contiguous to both and fronts on Third Street. These three parcels are all owned by Macon, Bibb County and were transferred to the Urban Development Authority with a request that they tried to find a developer that could make good use and productive use of these three properties. And I think that they have done so. We have partnered now with Woda Cooper, which is a multifamily developer with national prominence, but who has indicated an interest in coming to Macon and putting together a workforce housing project that would include all three of these properties in one form or fashion. It was my intention to go over and share my screen with members of the commission and review quickly the PowerPoint presentation that was made by Walter Cooper on June the 9th to the commission concerning their plans for use of this property. But then to answer questions from individuals here in the audience who may have further concerns or want some clarification. And Mr. Dennis Blackburn from Woda Cooper is on the call and may be available if we can let him call in a little later. If any member of the public wishes to make a comment, we have a computer set up at the podium and you'll be able, when recognized, to come to the podium and ask your question or share your concerns about this as we try to work our way through this public hearing. Rachel, can you share my screen at this point in time and bring up the PowerPoint presentation? Hopefully now you in the audience, socially distanced as you are, can see on the screen the PowerPoint presentations. This is the presentation of Hawthorne Commons, which is the name that has been given to this potential development by the developer, Walter Cooper and Parallel Housing. The two of them are going in together on this. Next slide, please. The presentation was given to the commission by Mr. Dennis Blackburn, and he was joined on the call by Mr. Greg Bayard of Parallel Housing. And they gave us basic data on the Hawthorne Commons plan, the site concept and floor plans and pictures of other developments. Next slide. First word or two about Woda Cooper. They were formed in 1990. They are privately owned. Their headquarters is in Columbus, Ohio, but they have a regional office in Savannah where Dennis Blackburn is headquartered. And Mr. Dennis Blackburn is the senior vice president for development of the Woda Co. Companies. They develop multifamily housing in 15 states. They have developed over 350 projects, but their focus is on affordable workforce housing. They are an industry leader consistently among the top 15 developers nationally, and they manage over 13,000 units. Also, the last bullet point on that page, they are long-term owners. So they not only build these projects, but they manage them for the indefinite future. They don't buy, build them and then sell them and move on and go somewhere else. So they are here for the long term and they want to be part of our community. Next slide. A word or two about Parallel Housing. They are a nonprofit organization based out of Athens, Georgia. They have 18 years of experience in the Georgia affordable housing market, and their mission is to provide energy-efficient, sustainable, affordable housing to communities in need. They first lead certified affordable housing development in the southeast is one of their claims to fame. Next slide. The Hawthorne Commons project consists, as I said before, of the Virgil Powers School Building itself. There is an auxiliary building for the school that was formerly the auditorium, but it's a separate building immediately behind the school building and the Fulton Baptist Church. There will also be a new three-story building with an elevator that will face out onto Third Street. So it'll be contiguous to both the church property and the Virgil Powers School property, but face out on the Third Street. The total development acreage is 2.64. They were initially looking at 52 residential units, but as you'll hear in just a few minutes, that has been reduced to 48 from 52. So next slide. The interior amenities that they are proposing to put in for the, in the new building, there'll be a leasing and management office, a multifamily room, a fitness center, a wellness and health office, laundry room and bathrooms. On the outside, they'll have a community garden, a covered pavilion with tables and grills, and 56 off-street parking spaces. They have, the resident units have a high efficiency HVAC, Energy Star appliances, Range refrigerator, dishwasher, microwave and washer dryer hookups. They don't provide the washer and dryer, but there is a laundry room if you prefer to use that. But if you want to buy wash and dry, the hookups are already there. There's an LVT flooring, window blinds and ceiling fans that come with each unit. Next slide. There were 52 affordable housing tax credit units initially planned, but as I say, that number has been reduced to 48. These are in part financed by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs and development targets the Housing for Older Persons, HFOP, Housing for Older Persons, which means and requires that one person of 55 years of age or older needs to be in each of 80% of the units. So the other 20% can be occupied by younger people, but 80% of the units have to have an individual in residence that's 55 years of age or older. They use the income averaging method, and 11 of the units are scheduled to be at 50% of AMI, that's average mean income or median income, and estimated for a one-bedroom unit to be approximately $400 a month. For a two-bedroom unit, 470. So these are to be affordable, sustainable units. The other 41 units are at 60% of AMI, and they project at this point, a one-bedroom to rent for $490 and a two-bedroom for $575. So if you have more income, you may be in one of the 41 units of 60% AMI, but they've got some reserved for 50% of AMI. Next slide. More about the commons of this project, the Hawthorne Commons and the basics. They're lead certified for homes program. They've got recorded covenants restricting the use of this property for affordable housing for 30 years. They have wellness office and programs provided by eHealth screenings. Water construction will be responsible for oversight of the construction and water management will be responsible for overseeing the ongoing management of both. Total development cost estimated to be $11.8 million. Here's an overhead view of the site to be developed. Second street is on the left-hand side of the slide, running basically from the top to the bottom of the screen there. Hawthorne Street runs along the top there. Third street is again from top to bottom, but on the right-hand side, you can see the school building, the auditorium immediately behind it. You can see the Fulton Baptist Church on the corner. All right. And the vacant lot that is behind both. Next slide. This is the site plan as it was originally proposed and in the PowerPoint presentation. You can see the school building at the top, the auditorium again, the church building in the lower right, and the new building that fronts on Third Street will be this three-story building with the elevator in it. 56 parking places in the interior, and there are two driveways that provide a circular pattern, both driveways coming off of Hawthorne Street. So you see the parking lot and there's an entryway at the top and an entryway out or an exit out at the bottom of that. Next slide. This is a typical school floor plan for the first floor, showing some two-bedroom units, some one-bedroom units as space allows. Next slide. A second floor plan, basically that mirrors the first floor plan, but they plan to add an elevator, which is shown that will connect and provide access for people with disabilities and older people up and down. Shown kind of in the, the right side of that slide, the little rectangular box is the elevator that they're proposing for the school building. Next slide. This is what I referred to as the gymnasium or the auxiliary building behind. They're looking at putting four one-bedroom units in that building. Next slide. This was the original plan that they showed to us that showed four two-bedroom units in the church. So they were going to convert the church to use residential use and have four residential units in the church. But that has changed now, but that was the original plan. Next slide. This is the new building, the new three-story building. And the first floor shows the combination of two-bedroom units and one-bedroom units that will be on the first floor along with the community room and the office and other facilities. Looks like the mailroom and others. Next slide should be the second floor. Right? And more, again, residential units and the floor plan layout. And then the next slide should be the third floor. And it is, again, showing the breakdown of, a breakout of two-bedroom units and one-bedroom units on the third floor. And you can see the elevator there in the middle. Next slide. These are some other slides that Walter Cooper showed us of other developments that they have done around the These are some other, uh, slides that Wodakupa showed us of other developments that they have done around the country. This is a Cavalier Green in Corona, Michigan. Next. And they make a habit of u- reusing, adaptive reuse of old school buildings. They love old school buildings and they point it out because oftentimes you have wide corridors and beautiful hardwood floors that, uh, lend themselves, uh, to, to residential units and adaptive reuse. They've got some interior pictures, uh, shown of this development, uh, Cavalier Green and Corona, uh, Corona, Michigan. And next, Nelson School Commons in Nelsonville, Ohio, showing how they've redone that. Uh, next, uh, here's a wide corridor in Nelsonville School Commons, uh, and shows you a kitchen in one of the units. Portland School Apartments in Portland, Michigan, uh, sitting up on the hill there. Next slide. Uh, Sycamore House in Duran, Michigan. Next slide, Fairwood Commons in Columbus, Ohio. And there's some interior views of the units there. And this is Sustainable Fellwood in Savannah, Georgia. So maybe you've been over and seen, uh, this particular development in Savannah. Uh, another picture of, of the Sustainable Fellwood in Savannah. An interior shot, so the exercise room there. Uh, Harmony Green in Pula, Georgia. That's just outside of Savannah, and again, more, uh, pictures of, of what they do. Interior shots from Harmony Green in Pula. This is a gazebo on the grounds of Harmony Green, and, uh, this project here Hawthorne Commons includes a, a gazebo and an outdoor, uh, the setting. Silver Lakes in Madison, Georgia is another development that they've done. Another picture of the Madison, Georgia development, another picture of the Ma- Madison, Georgia project. And an interior shot from Silver Lakes. There's, uh, Malu Point in East Point, Georgia. That's a three-story development. Four, is it four? Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. An interior shot from that, uh, development in East Point. Last slide. Um, at the, after their presentation, there was a good discussion by the commissioners, and several commissioners expressed some concern of, about the, uh, adaptive reuse, uh, of the church, uh, as residential units. The development agreement between Macon Bibb County and the Urban Development Authority indicated that the Urban Development Authority should try to find a developer that would reuse the church or leave it in place as a historic church, but it did provide that it, the church could be used as a meeting room or community center, um, but not as residential. There was a proposal to modify that so as to allow the residential use, and that was, uh, adopted by the committee of the whole. Um, but subsequent to, to that meeting, we received a letter, uh, from, uh, Mr. Denny Blackburn, Dennis Blackburn, of Wodakupa, and I'll just read the letter, uh, if I may. We've made a few additional copies of the letter that are up here along with a modified floor, I mean, uh, development plan to show how the, uh, development has changed. And it reads as follows, "Then Mayor Rickert, first, I'd like to thank you for all the support you and Macon Bibb County are providing towards the development of the Hawthorne Commons. I would also like to follow up on the discussions that took place this past Tuesday, June the ninth, twenty twenty, uh, during which the council committee meeting, or during the council committee meeting. When I presented the scope of the proposed development, which including converting the Fulton Baptist Church into full residential units, we heard some very valid concerns voiced at this meeting about using the church in this manner. Since the meeting, along with our co-partner Parallel Housing Incorporated, we have reviewed the concept plans with our design and construction teams and have decided to move forward as follows. Uh, we would only use the former Virgil Power School Building and its auxiliary building and construct a new building for development of Hawthorne Commons. We would not use the church as part of the residential development or common areas. This would reduce the development plan from the initially planned fifty-two units to forty-eight units. We would budget fifty thousand dollars to renovate the exterior of the church with some basic improvements, including a new roof, and lease it back to the Fulton Baptist Church at a nominal rate. We think this would be an excellent solution that allows the redevelopment of affordable housing and preserves a historic church in this community. Signed, Dennis Blackburn." Um, at this point, uh, Dennis, I don't know that you can unmute yourself or if you can be unmuted, but do you have any qu- comments or did I misstate anything that you wanted to correct?
No, no, ca- can you hear me, sir?
I can hear you, sir.
Okay, now fir- first of all, uh, you, you, I really thought you made an excellent presentation. You, you made the presentation better than I did, so I'd like to hire you for future presentations. No, I, I, I think though that last week's meeting, um, we got together and, and we basically realized that our concept plan was wrong. We should not be using the church. Uh, so what we, we thought that through, and we thought, what we need to do is we need to downsize the development project, and then what we can do for the church, but we would, uh, as it would still be part of the overall site, we would renovate the exterior and then, uh, provide it back to the church at an absolute nominal low charge rate, so.
Very good. Thank, thank you so much, Dennis, and also the updated, uh, um, layout for the development that you sent to me earlier today. I've made copies of it, about ten copies, uh, down here on the podium if anybody wants to take them. At this point in time, are there members of the commission that have questions, concerns or comments that they want to make, or can I turn this over for public input?
This is wonderful. Wonderful.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm like, I, I think it's an excellent plan, and I think that the developer, uh, Dennis, I thank you for, for thinking about what we said to you, and I, I'm glad that we're saving the church because it is a historic black church in this community, and we don't need to lose, lose another one. And the fact that you're adding fifty thousand dollars to do some work on that church, that's an excellent addition that we didn't ask for. So I like your new plan. I think we should go forward with it. I think it'll be a great, uh, addition to this area of the city and, and maybe develop around it further. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Commissioner Winn. Other commissioners that have any questions, comments or concerns? If not, I'll ask-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, Commissioner Watkins.
Uh, Mr. Blackwell might be back to answer my question. Um, so I, I am appreciative that we are, we have reconsidered the, the usage of the church. Um, but now can you talk to me a little bit about the finances? A big part of this is the county financing alone, right? We talk, we, we say partnership, but it's primarily about whether or not we're going to give a half-million dollar loan. And I'd asked about the pro forma last week, but with the, with the new changes, what is the net cash flow, return on investment, debt-to-credit ratio, because I know most of this is based on financing of some sort, so, and we're a big part of that nature. I guess we're in third or fourth position. So, could you talk to me a little bit? I didn't get a clear understanding of what we were expecting this to net last week, last time we talked.
Sure, uh, Council Watkins, uh, in, in the, in the tax credit world, uh, we, we do not review things in terms of return on equity or return on profits. Uh, what, what we do is we come up with, uh, an actual development budget, and then this gets financed, uh, by different fin- funding sources, so. And, uh, the, the main funding source for this are federal, uh, low-income housing tax credits issued by the IRS. These are federal, uh, tax credits, you know, sold it to different equity investors, and, uh, these equity investors are literally large, large businesses. Uh, there's also in Georgia, there's a state housing credit. That'll be the, the second part of the actual tax, uh, uh, credit, uh, structure. And then also have debt on this, this project, uh, bank, bank debt to cover it. We also have then, what, what DTA is looking for, Department of Community Affairs is looking for, is looking for commitment from, uh, from actual communities, cities such as Macon Bibb County, if they are providing a- additional loans to the actual transaction that equates to scoring points in the, the actual competitive application process that we go through. And that is why we're, we're here in front of you today.
All right, and I, and thank you for that, first of all, and I'll answer about debt credit. So about this half a million may not be your question to answer, but I'm certain someone from the county has reviewed this loan, um, request, and that's what I'm asking. What do we expect debt-to-credit ratio to be? Or whatever mechanism is that we use. Typically, we use ROI, DCR, NOI to make these determinations on a real estate deal, and that's what I'm asking. Um, so if not you, I can wait for Alex Morrison, who I'm sure has reviewed it from the UDA to tell me that as well.
Right.
Okay, so thank you.
You're gonna have to stop using all of these, um, acronyms and stuff. You, you have to say the whole thing out so we know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so the-
ROI and all of that.
Yeah.
Return on investment. I knew what that one was, but you had some others.
What, yeah, let, let me interrupt if I may to, to come recite, and I, I may call on Alex Morrison here to come up to the podium if I misstate anything. This, we're not selling this property to Wodakupa. We are leasing this property to Wodakupa for the next forty-five years. That's a long-term lease at a nominal rate. It seems to me that the lease rate is something like a hundred dollars a year. So they have the use of the property for the next forty-five years, but at the end of that time, it comes back to us or the lease rate is adjusted to a market rate lease rate. That's number one. So this isn't an actual sale of the property, it's a long-term lease. Uh, th- the second part of that i- is that they carry all of the insurance, they carry all of the cost of, of the development, um, and what they've offered to do for the church, uh, now i- is a benefit that they are, that they are adding to their original proposal and proposition. Alex, anything else that I n- need to say about the structure of this?
One. Hello, hello.
Go ahead, Alex.
Okay, um, no, you, you say it correctly, um, one critical feature of this, uh, piece is that while the ground will be leased on a capital lease format to make it where they carry all the insurance and carrying costs, um, the improvements upon the ground will be on the tax rolls, but it is an important-
Excellent point. Uh, any member of the public have a question or comment or concern, and if so, please feel free to come to the podium, uh, introduce yourself to us and, and ask your question or state your comment or concern. Good evening, sir.
Can't hear him.
We can't hear him.
All right, well-
We are getting the, uh, we have a, a backup audio plan for the public, so we're hooking that up right now. That way, um, you guys will be able to hear the people who are addressing. And I'm turning off that microphone, Sarah.
So those of us in the room will only be able to hear you with your voice and not amplified, but the commissioners will be able to hear you. Mr. Crawley, I understand you, you're a member of the Greater Turner Tabernacle AME Church across the street. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hold it up to his mouth. Still can't hear. Try now.
We're still testing it to make sure it works, that we all will be able to hear him. Just bear with us, thank you.
Well, I wonder if it would work if I tried to relay what Mr. Crawley said. Let's, let's try that while y'all continue to work. Mr. Crawley, talk to me and I'll relay what you say to the commissioners. Pa- pause right there, and, and let me just say to the commissioners, uh, that Mr. Crawley is saying that he, on behalf of the pastor, Pastor White of Greater Turner Tabernacle, he appreciates, uh, meeting with Commissioner Schlesinger and others about the conditions in the area generally and development, and appreciates the opportunity to be here. I think we did better my way. So Sarah, just quit doing that and let him talk. Let him talk to me and see if we can, okay. It's a, it's a, yeah.
What we're concerned about is just the communications in terms of developments that are coming forward. We realize we, uh, we, as a church, we know that we have other developments coming up. We have, uh, ethnical, the development, the office. We know that they're working on the project across the street.
We know that they're working on the project across the street.
I don't know. What? I'm better now?
Question that I have a long. I have a very little question here that was um the um assistant to the pastor that saved me, my sister Miller. Um and it's asking about the director.
Microphone's off. So so you again, your concerns are to be kept abreast of developments in the neighborhood. So part part of the concern that being expressed is that as development occurs in the neighborhood, the existing infrastructure needs upgrading sidewalks that are not ADA accessible and conditions for crossing the street safely, et cetera. Those kinds of things as far as the infrastructure. The only thing I can tell you is is that the new development should help facilitate improvements to the infrastructure by merely by the taxes that they're going to contribute into that area. But let I appreciate your willingness and the church wanting to be a part of the redevelopment of that area. And I cannot speak for Wodakupa. But it is certainly my understanding and my impression that they want to be part of the neighborhood and to work with you and would look forward to working through details of how they can be a better neighbor.
Yes, Mayor.
And and I'm I'm hearing now from Dennis Blackburn, I believe, saying that 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 their application has to be submitted. But everybody needs to understand that if they do not get the low-income housing tax credits, the whole deal is off. They they can't do it without the tax credits. So the next step would be to for them to put in the application and see if they get the the tax credits. If they do, then there will be a planning process for implementation of this proposed development. And that would be your opportunity to get together with Wodakupa and discuss your concerns and what you'd like to see and wouldn't like to see, et cetera. Decler, Janice Janice Ross, if you would give her your updated information, she'll be sure that you are invited to future meetings and we'll pass it along to Wodakupa as well. Any other members of the public that want to be heard on this proposed development? Any other commissioner have a final closing comment? Because I'm not getting a indication that anybody else wants to be heard. I think we've answered a lot of questions. Dennis Blackburn, are you still there and any other questions or any other comments you wanted to make?
No, I I I think, Mayor, if I could, if I could just add, I think you've you've summarized it well. We put the application in tomorrow and then we wait for, as I said, it's a it's a competitive application process. So we are in competition with applications going in from throughout the state of Georgia. And we will know in December of this year if we move forward or not. And then at that time, that's when we will come to the, we'll have a neighborhood meeting and meet with the with the neighborhood and the community. E- express where we are at that time, their input and feedback at that time.
Excellent, okay. Who was that? Oh, uh Com- Commissioner Vivins, is that you, sir?
Yes, sir. I just want to be sure our agreements on how the church was to be used. That we we talked about that, but I want to be sure what we agreed on.
Well, they have written, Wodakupa has written us a letter to say that it the church would not be used for residential use. But instead, they would add fifty thousand dollars into their budget to restore the exterior of the church, put a new roof on it and make it available to the church for their use at a nominal rate of terms and conditions to be mutually agreeable between the church and Wodakupa.
Right. And there was some discussion about a community center. Is that that not the case?
That's not the case. That's that's off the table now. Wodakupa is saying that they'll let the church stay as a church. In fact, I think the updated layout plan indicates that the church would continue to be used as a church.
Okay, all right, but but any rates that are charged, would it be something the church could afford? You know, you could price them out.
No, it mutually agreeable, and I I think you can tell that that the Wodakupa people want to be a good neighbor and and want to get a good start in this neighborhood, and and this is a way for them to do that.
Yeah, well, we still need to encourage them to have rates that the church can afford. I don't know what a good neighbor means.
Not um. Ma- Mayor, if I if I may say, this is Dennis Blackburn, we 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 plan to do it at no charge. I mean, no, no rent. I mean, there there may be a maybe a one dollar, a ten dollar or something like that.
Oh, yeah, and I can understand a charge. I mean, there's something they can afford and there's something they can't. But I think it will be meaningful that it is used as a church. Yep, or a community center. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Vivins. Any other questions, comments, or concerns by any other commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment. Dennis, if you could address this, I think Commissioner Vivins was asking about whether we're going to use that as a um a center, like a community center, but I thought that I recalled something in your plans, having some kind of activity area for this development too, anyway, in addition to what the church was being considered for. Is that right?
Yeah, we 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 will have a a multi-purpose room in that'll be in the new building. Uh that that'll be where the the fitness facility will be as well, and we'll have our our own management office will be there as as well.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Thank you again.
All right, sounds good.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I will declare this public hearing adjourned. And members of the commission, if you'll call back in at five o'clock. We'll get the pre-commission meeting started as close to five o'clock as we can. But.
Seven minutes?
Uh well, Janice is telling, Janice is telling me just take a recess, but we're going to let this continue to run so that you don't need to sign log off and log back on.
Thank you.
So we're in we're in recess until five o'clock. Hey, boss. How you doing? I'm doing very well.
Flavor and water. Like this flavor, water smells like bake, you know. I know really it's flavored water.
Okay, well, we're ready to start, Rachel, Chris, are we? Are we, are we live on, live on Facebook? Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, let me call to order this pre-commissioned meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission for Tuesday, June the sixteenth. Let me start with this disclaimer pursuant to instructions from the President of the United States and Honorable Donald J. Trump, the Governor of the State of Georgia, Honorable Brian Kemp, and Mayor of Macon Bibb County, Honorable Robert A. B. Rickett. Macon Bibb County Committee meetings scheduled for Tuesday, June the sixteenth will be available to the Macon Bibb County Commissioners by conference call only for the five o'clock committee of the whole meeting and the six o'clock regular commission meeting. Commission chambers will be closed to the public and the press as we follow the recommendation from the White House to limit public gatherings in order to slow the spread of COVID-19. Therefore, the public and press may only access the meeting simultaneously online at www.maconbib.us With that having been said, let me give you briefly what we're going to do tonight. At the pre-commissioned meeting, we have several items on the consent agenda, alcohol applications. We have four items, five items of new business that we want to bring to your attention. And we've got an update on the governor's latest executive order. So let me start by getting the clerk to confirm that we've got a quorum, even though you, we want to be sure you didn't quit on us and, and leave and go someplace else. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll and see who we've got on the phone?
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to. Commissioner Al Tillman?
That'd be Mayor Protem.
Oh, Mayor Protem Al Tillman?
Present.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Bivens? If you'll unmute yourself while I call the roll. Thank you.
It's still muted.
Okay, Commissioner Mallory Jones? Commissioner Elaine Lucas?
Here.
Commissioner Larry Schlesinger?
Here.
Commissioner Scotty Shepherd?
Here.
Commissioner Virgil Watkins?
Here.
Commissioner Valerie Nguyen?
Present.
Excellent, we do, we do have a quorum and we'll continue. Michael, let me call on you and if you would briefly summarize the, the governor's latest order, which I understand is another thirty-five page order.
Forty pages.
This is forty, Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
Good night.
Please don't read it all.
No, ma'am. So he's changed the, the title of his series. It was Healthy Georgia, it's now Empowering a Healthy Georgia. And this order is effective from today through the end of June. The, the biggest difference is he, he changed the definition of the word ring in the sense of you can't have a gathering of, it's now more than fifty people in a single location. Five people. He adds definitions of live performance venue and conventions, and he adds some regulations relating to live performance venues and conventions. The shelter in place order continues for people who have the listed high-risk medical conditions being lung disease, asthma, heart disease, immunocompromised, diabetes, dialysis patients, things like that. But he removes from the shelter in place order the, the general blanket requirement for everyone over age sixty-five to shelter in place. And so if you're over age sixty-five, but you don't have any of those conditions, then the shelter in place order is removed. For restaurants and dining services, he, he expands a little bit as far as the capacity. He removed the, the former restriction of ten patrons per three hundred square feet for the, the fifth section about industry commerce and organizations generally. A, a lot of it is just, just kind of a, a slow relaxation of the requirements that were imposed in previous orders, including eliminating mandatory capacity limitations on grocery stores and food establishments. Stores can start offering samples or offer self-serve salad bars or buffets again. Gyms and fitness centers can start offering hot tub, sauna, and steam room service again. He removes the requirement for personal care facilities like tattoo parlors and hair salons and massage therapists to be by appointment only, they're allowed to resume walk-in service. The, the party size limitations for groups like movie theaters and bowling alleys are eliminated, longer a party size limitation. Places can start using party rooms, they can start using playground facilities if they, if they sanitize them regularly. And then all the references in, in past orders where it talked about groups of people having to social distance, it referred to non-cohabitating persons. So if you went where the friend that didn't live with you, you were supposed to social distance, he's changed those references to say persons in the same party. So now if you go with your friend, you, you can stay near them, but just not with other people who aren't with you. He removes that in the section six healthcare, removes a lot of the specific guidance for dental optometric optician and ambulatory surgery services and, and just directs them to follow the general critical infrastructure requirements. Section seven for education and children, there, there weren't any notable changes in that section. For number eight governments, section eight, it says the county boards of equalization are now allowed to transmit decisions electronically upon the prior consent of parties. They don't have to transmit them personally. And they also have vendors when they have to sign a treaty bond such as performance bonds or payment bonds, they're allowed to do that electronically so long as they can provide an original to the county within seven days of a request being made. Section nine is a new section for sports and live performance venues. There will be no live performance events prior to July first, but I had a Zoom call yesterday with Spencer Hawkins and with a number of directors of different event facilities around the community, talking about these, these changes specifically. And it seems to be setting up sort of expectations for what's, he, he hasn't announced a specific opening procedure or anything like that, but it seems like he's anticipating announcing one. And I would expect it to be probably in the last couple of days of June, and, and so this seems to be setting that up for events to start in the beginning of July. Right now, they can, places can have drive-in events where patrons have to stay in or immediately around their cars. And those just follow the non-critical infrastructure rules. Venues are also allowed to have events so long as they're close to the public, and that's for things like musical recording sessions, practices and rehearsals. If they're just live streaming a performance or things like if, if a baseball game wants to play a fanless event, no fans allowed. They can do that and they can follow the non-critical infrastructure rules. Otherwise, if it's ticketed free or invitation only, they have to follow the guidelines set out in the order. And it creates three different tiers based on the capacity of the venue. Tier one is under a thousand people, tier two is under five thousand people, but more than a thousand, and tier three is over five thousand people. And it sets out various sanitation and, and screening requirements for the, the tier one venues, and then the tier two venues have to follow the tier one venues and a little bit more. And then the tier three are the, the strictest sets of rules. There's also a, a new section ten called conventions, which is another completely new section. It says you can't have any conventions before July first, and that's, you know, like trade shows and, and those kinds of things. If conventions, it says if conventions are allowed to operate, they'll have to comply with non-critical infrastructure rules. But I didn't see anything in the order that specified any kind of exceptions for when conventions can operate. I'm assuming that that's, that's also just preparatory for something that's going to come out probably in a couple of weeks to get us ready for conventions to be allowed to start in July. Sections nine relating to enforcement, or I'm sorry, eleven relating to enforcement and twelve miscellaneous, there were no changes. And then he signed it on June eleventh, and so that's, that's the current order. It's effective through the end of June, which is a, a two weeks from today. And his historical practice has been waiting until a day or two before it expires, so I'm, I'm guessing probably Monday, the twenty-ninth, we're going to see a follow-up order. And it'll probably elaborate a little bit more on live venues, concerts, performances, and conventions at that time.
Excellent, Michael, thank you very much, and if any commissioner has a question or concern, I'm confident that Michael will be glad to try to walk you through whatever specific question you have about this order. We are trying to comply with the governor's order and also trying to comply with the wishes of a majority of members of the commission who want us, or want to see us resume in-person meetings. We do plan at this point in time to have our next meeting, next week, the twenty-third, as a live in-person meeting. But we are trying to make a, a system where you, if you have one of these underlying conditions or serious reservations for your personal safety, that you'll be able to conference call and call in. We're trying to work that out. We think that while the governor's executive order for emergency situation is in place, we think we can do that without charging you using one of your two times when you can call in with a doctor's order, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to work that out. Final details will be coordinated with the county attorney's office and the clerk's office, and that'll be in the agenda that we send out. So if you want to be here in person with us, you should see the, the, the chambers now with only every fourth seat being open and available for people to sit. The others are marked off to try to seat people six feet apart. So we'll be trying to do that as well as having hand sanitizer and others and limiting the total number of people in the chamber to approximately thirty visitors plus those of us that are here. So we try to kind of slowly reopen, we're trying to accommodate as many concerns as we can, but additional details to follow. Any questions, comments, or concerns about that? If not, I'll continue with the, the tonight's agenda, the next.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Lucas.
Yeah, later on, on the agenda, Commissioner Allen and I, who represent the, you on the Board of Health, we have a resolution and a similar one was passed in our Board of Health meeting on yesterday. And our legal department was very kind in going ahead and drafting one for us that just sort of piggybacks on the governor's order, but it also gives our Board of Health a, a little push toward making sure that industry is abiding by the rules and regulations, making it safe for their employees. It just helps them in carrying out their duties through the, the health department. So it's on the agenda later on, and we'd like to ask commissioners consideration.
Right, we've got, we've got that on the list of new business for this pre-commissioned meeting, it's item E that we'll get to momentarily, so thank you for that. Oh, the review of tonight's meeting, I hope this meeting will, will be a, a typical usual and, and nothing of great controversy, I say that, but every time I do, I jinx myself. Let me just tell you what's on the agenda. I'll call on somebody to, to lead us with an invocation, Lord, we stand in need of prayer, so I'll call on somebody to give us an invocation. We'll approve the minutes of the three meetings that we have had. The regular meeting and the pre-commissioned meeting both held on June the second, and, well, I, I'm sorry, this Janice, so the two or three sets of minutes of public hearing, oh, there was a public hearing regarding the budget, I'm sorry. So those minutes about the public hearing on the budget, that'll be really brief. Then the pre-commissioned and the regular commission meeting all held on June the second. We'll have reports from committees, and I think Janice has sent out to the chair of each committee that had a meeting, I think. No, well, she'll have to wing it for you then, and, and, and each chairman can kind of give a, a report based on what Janice says your agenda was. Yeah, and then we've got several items on the consent agenda for new alcohol beverage applications that I'll get to momentarily. Then we'll go into old business, the first item of old business is whether or not to override the veto that I made of the ordinance changing the, the alcohol license applications. We can talk about that a little bit more in detail momentarily, but that'll be the first item under old business, whether or not to override the mayor's veto on that. Item B is the appointment of Russell Nelson to the Civil Service Board for the Sheriff's Office. Item C is a resolution to confirm the appointment of Dennis Hagerman to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board. And I'm not sure whether he was able to join us tonight, but I think he's on the phone with us now.
Yeah.
And, and Russell Nelson both, I, something's wrong with my computer and I can't see anybody's picture on there. But Commissioner Lucas, I believe you approved both of these appointments. But your committee did subject to them being able to make an appearance here tonight, whether so. So Chief Nelson, thank you, and, and Mr. Hagman, thank you for being on the line. Chairman Lucas, any questions, comments you want to pose or?
The, the only thing is I'd like to them to just, just tell us about their experience on there or how they'd like to, to serve, and then we'll be finished with them. Chief Nelson.
Chief Nelson. Why in the world, why in the world would you want to serve on the Sheriff's?
I didn't quite put it like that.
Look, ma'am, Commissioner, I appreciate y'all considering me for the appointment, because you know I served on the sheriff's for thirty-five years and under four different sheriffs. Commissioner Shepard was my supervisor for five years, you know. Decent background on it. And going those thirty-five years, I was promoted by all four of the sheriffs I served upon me. And I spent the last eight years as the chief deputy during that time. I survived Georgia, the sheriff's office, including the took part in the hiring and the of the deputies and the bailers on the department. And I'll be willing and glad to serve, I believe, with my experience, I can bring a lot to the board.
Okay, thank you. Is, is the other, is Mr. Hagman?
Mr. Hagman, are you on the line?
I see his name, but I, he's.
He may need to unmute himself.
Yeah, he's, okay.
Can you hear me now? I can now, go ahead, sir. All right, in answering the question you're asking of, I was there for thirty-three years. I, I think we're in a critical time where we really at this point need to take good, hard looks at our personnel and, and be understanding of where the community is. I've, I, I thought I did quite well in my job as far as coming from the jail and, and going all the way through to major serving under the sheriffs. I, I believe I, I can bring something to the table because I, I feel like I can, I can give a voice to all the people that we're looking at and hiring and also give a good, good understanding of what those people are, are going to be in. We're in a pretty tough time right now for law enforcement and getting qualified people are going to be hard, we're going to need to take a good, hard look at these folks and make sure that, that everybody is, is on and bored and, and understanding that we don't only need to be policing, we need to be talking and, and we need to be assuring these people that they are going to be taken care of no matter what the situation.
Okay, very good. Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners, we've already approved these two nominations, I believe that's what we did. And so I have no further concerns, does anybody else have any?
I don't have a concern though, do want to speak to Chief Nelson, hadn't seen him in a long time.
Yeah, it has been a while. Okay, well, we've already, we're already going to recommend their approval for full commission.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas, that's great. And Chief, if you want to stay on the line, and Major Hagman, if you want to stay on the line, you're more than welcome to, but you, this would also be an appropriate time for you to drop off if you don't want to stay with us. So thank you very much for joining us this afternoon, we appreciate it, and we appreciate your willingness to serve on the Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity.
Good, thank you. The next, all right, thank you, Chief. The, the next items on our agenda, starting with a, a, a item D under old business will be the, the three resolutions to approve the novation of the Virgil Power School property and the revolving loan funds and the resolution to Hawthorne Commons and the, the four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of home funds pledging those to the project if they, if they get the tax credits. The next item, item G is a, a two change orders for Warren Associates at Lake Tobosowski for improvements to the Ranger Station to be paid out of twenty-eighteen SPOLOX funds, that was approved by the Operations and Finance Committee. Item H is a resolution to amend the consolidated plan and twenty-nineteen action plan for and twenty-nineteen action plan for community development and housing, uh, programs. Um, I believe, uh, that was in the Economic and Community Development Committee, is that right?
It was.
It was, and, and they recommend approval. Uh, item I, uh, is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a Georgia Department of Transportation contract to accept the CARES Act funding for the Macon Downtown Airport. Uh, Operations and Finance heard that, I think, and, uh, and recommends approval. The, uh, item J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Yancey Brothers, uh, for a Skid steer rotary mower with funds, uh, from the Solid Waste Management Fund. I think Operations and Finance, uh, heard that and recommends approval. Uh, item K is a resolution approving the submission of the Macon Bibb County five-year short-term work program and capital improvement from to the Middle Georgia Regional Commission for Compliance Review. Uh, was that Economic and Community Development as well, Janice?
No, it was.
Uh, Operations and Finance heard that, recommends approval. Uh, item L is a resolution to authorize the mayor, always does need to execute six change orders to the construction contract with the International City Builders for Henderson Stadium. Uh, Operations and Finance heard that and recommends approval. Uh, item M.
I'm sorry, continue, continue, but I got a question.
Okay, uh, item M is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to transfer fifty-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars from various line items and the solicitor's item to the transfer of the capital improvement fund to pay additional costs relating to the purchase of new vehicle. That's for the Solicitor's Office. Operations and Finance heard that and recommends approval. Oh, okay, and, and Janice is telling me, and from there on is all new business that we need to get to. So flipping back over to new business, let me start with the. Commissioner Watkins?
The old, the old business that you mentioned on the change order at Lake Tobo.
Yes, sir.
I don't rec- I remember doing a sixty-six thousand dollar change order for Henderson Stadium and a ninety-something thousand for a Skid steer. I don't remember a change order for Lake Tobo of that amount. I remember it was discussing a million-dollar change order and it getting tabled, but that wasn't this week. That wasn't last week. So, I, I know Janice has the minutes from last meeting, because you just reviewed for me right there. I'm probably wrong, I'm sure.
Yes, sir, that item was on Facilities and Engineering.
Oh, Facilities and Engineering.
Yes, sir, the change order for Lake Tobosoffke was on Facilities and Engineering.
It doesn't even make sense, that's why he said it like that. Why would ninety-five thousand dollar approval be in Facilities and Engineering?
Right.
Uh, I think because it was Lake Tobosoffke and comes out of, comes out of the Lake Tobo Fund. Oh, oh, no, these were SPOLOX dollars, I'm sorry.
These are SPOLOX dollars.
All right, so we all agree, that's not making a lot of sense.
Was on Facilities and Engineering.
It's still money.
Well, I, 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 I'll accept responsibility for that. I, I made the assignment and it went through, uh, and Facilities and Engineering heard it. We're all sitting around the table, all around the Zoom screen together, so I.
We've given up on you.
I'm right. I'm trying to do better, I'm trying to do better.
We've given up.
All right, um, we, we, going back to the consent agenda, uh, we have three new alcohol licenses. I don't think they're controversial. The first one is for Millerfield Thirty-One Seventy LLC, located at Thirty-One Seventy Millerfield Road. Uh, it is an existing convenience store with gas and alcohol. This is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Uh, the next one is, uh, Exxon LLC doing businesses. Exxon Food Mart located at Twenty-three-Eleven Pineona Avenue. Uh, and that is, uh, for beer-only package sales to go. Uh, it's a change of ownership in an existing convenience store with gas and alcohol already there. And the third and final, uh, application is for beer and wine package sales to go by Publix Supermarkets Incorporated, uh, located at, uh, Fifty-Five Eighty-One Thomaston Road in Macon, Georgia. This is the brand-new Publix at the intersection of Thomaston Road and Heath Road, I believe. It's, it's a brand-new Publix, so that, this is their alcohol license. So those are the, those are the three. Is it que- questions, comments, or concerns by any Commissioner?
Yeah, I got a issue with B, I need a little clarification. And I, I heard you say existing, but we driving down that road every day. This was a boarded-up shop many months ago, and honestly, I mean, it's not a great location. Um, I've, I've made the argument many times that we're clustering convenience store on top of gas station, on top of n- none grocery item offering store that plays Lotto a lot and, and gaming machines. His location was, so the rule and clarification when, what makes it a cease? It was boarded up with chains on the door for at least a few months, uh, since COVID, so.
I, I, I do not know, but I'll, I'll defer to the, to the attorneys on this. I will read to you, uh, on the, the planning and zoning, zoning compliance. Uh, the language says permit issued subject to the following condition. Change of ownership of an existing convenience store with alcohol, package sales to go, and fuel sales, no outside storage sales or display authorized, no signage authorized by this permit, signage sale required, separate zoning permit, subject to requirements of Business Development Services. So they indicate that it, that it's, uh, an existing, uh, facility with alcohol sales and fuel sales. If you say it was boarded up, I think the rule is that as long as it wasn't boarded up for more than twelve months, uh, then they're entitled to reissue the alcohol license at that location. But, but I, I defer to the attorneys and, and to you, Commissioner Watkins, because I don't know. I, I just say it's a, a Twenty-three-Eleven Pineona Avenue.
And I, and I doubt it's been closed for twelve months, but I do know it has been some break in the, in the, um, in the ownership, i- i- in the opening of it, and.
Yeah, thi- this application is from somebody by the name of Hosneon Bashir, uh, on behalf of Exxon Two-Three-One-One LLC. Where's Twenty-three-Eleven Pineona? Is that, is that all the way below Eisenhower?
Uh, Twenty-three-Eleven is going to be next to the O'Reilly's, almost directly across from Hillman Barbershop, in that area.
Okay, I, well, I, you know, again, I, 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 I defer to you. I'm just reading, reading the, the application, the Sher- it's, it's, uh, it's got the sheriff's recommendation to grant the license. It's got the alcohol beverage application permits and the appropriate fees, and this is for beer-only package sales to go, which I find interesting, no wine. Uh, and then the planning and zoning certificate of compliance, uh, the measurement form filled out, uh, and it says it complies, um, and the ad that ran in the paper. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, and I guess I was just asking for clarity on how long it was closed. I know it was closed for some point, and if, if the, if the write-up that you read said that there was no break in, it's, and it's continued, yeah, I know that's incorrect, you know?
Um, Commissioner, I'm not, I'm not able to see anything immediately in our code that, that addresses that. I believe there are some provisions, but, um, just looking right now, I'm not, I'm not able to get this answer. That's not something that they normally indicate in the application packet. Um, if y'all want us to research it, you're, you know, you can certainly table it, and we can do that research, and we can, we can, uh, a couple of weeks if you want us to do that.
Yeah, and, and, and I guess my greater concern on this, not just this property, but what is, what are we approving when we're approving a change of ownership? It makes, the, the more questions I ask, the less sense this process makes, and, and it gives me more questions each, almost each week. I, I know when we just let it go unchecked, we don't learn anything, but every time I pull a piece of this onion back, it gets more convoluted, and again, I, I understand.
And, okay, well, the only, only thing, only thing I could add i- is that the sheriff has done a background check on the applicant, and the applicant, you know, the sheriff, based on that background check, uh, and I guess a history at that location, he's recommending that we approve the license, but.
And, and I'll say for the purposes of a change of ownership, I, um, my understanding is that just means that the current owner of record has a valid license. And so, you know, if you have a valid license and you, you board up your windows and door, lock your doors for, I believe the code allows for some period of time before, um, that causes, that's considered any kind of abandonment or anything like that, but that's, that's what I'm looking for.
And sometimes I get confused, and I, and I leave it alone after this. When we say change of ownership in this instance, are we talking about a physical change of title of that address or something else? Like, has the building been sold to Mr. Bashir, I believe, and the contents and the license are a part of it, or is it some other type of ownership when we say that?
That process is the same regardless of whether they actually deed the property to somebody else, and you have somebody else that owns the land, or sometimes they'll just lease it to another tenant. If there was a tenant in there before and they move out, and then you get a new tenant to run the store. Either one, it's the same process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The option, you, you do, Commissioner, you do have the option of tabling this if you want information, more information when we get to it. It, and that's fine if you want.
Can you want a table?
Uh, yes.
You do that?
Motion to table.
Second.
Got a, a motion to table, uh, uh, the item B on the consent agenda, which is the new alcohol business license for Exxon LLC DBA Exxon Food Mart located at Twenty-three-Eleven Pineona Avenue. For more information, it's a non-debatable motion, all in favor of tabling that item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
Thank you.
The a- the ayes have it, that, that item will be tabled. Can I get a motion to approve the other two, the Millerfield Thirty, Thirty-One Seventy and the Publix?
Some move.
Second.
Got a, got a motion and second for approval of the alcohol license, uh, Millerfield Thirty-One Seventy and Publix all.
Three, one, two, one, one.
Yeah, three, one, two, one, one.
We're rolling.
Well, it's a change of ownership.
No, no.
Okay, I got a motion, a motion and second to issue those two licenses, uh, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, those two will be on the final agenda for, for tonight. Uh, let me get to the new business now. We've got about twenty-five minutes and several things to cover, but we've already done item A under new business, which is Dennis Hagerman to the Civil Service Board. Uh, item B should be non-controversial, uh, and I'll read it to, to you. It's an ordinance authorizing a one-time suspension of the holiday pay schedule as designated in section five point oh-four of the Macon Bibb County Government Policies and Procedures Manual Regarding the Twenty-Twenty Independence Day Holiday, by amending the date of recognition of the holiday to be Friday, July the third, as opposed to July the fourth itself, because July the fourth falls on a Saturday. So this just changes the holiday to the, uh, Friday the third. Questions, comments, or concerns about that? If not, can I get a motion, uh, to approve this ordinance?
Some move. Some move, second.
Got a motion and second to approve the ordinance, further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor of celebrating, uh, Independence Day by taking Friday off, July the third, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, and, uh, that'll be on the, uh, uh, agenda tonight for final approval. Next, uh, is fireworks at Lake Tobosoffke. And item C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Munnell and Pyro Techniques LLC for a fireworks show at Lake Tobosoffke on July the fourth, to be paid from the Lake Tobosoffke Fund. Um, Commissioner Allen, were you the sponsor of that, sir?
I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, I, I have the information, sir.
All right, who did?
Uh, we waited as long as we could to decide if we were going to do this. Conditions appear to be better. Social distancing is still a requirement for, um, this annual activity that we have. Uh, we had the money already budgeted, uh, the budget was approved last week. So with that, uh, we decided to go ahead and move forward with this, um, annual event. We do a Tobosoffke every year. In order to do this, we had, uh, on the advice of legal, uh, do the procurement contract this way, because it is a specialized event, um, because we have new eyes in our procurement department. Uh, we, we did not do this last year, but the new eyes say this is the recommended way that we should have done it, to go ahead and get a contract approved prior to the event. And so you're not meaning again until right before the event, so this is why this contract is for you today.
Other questions, comments, or concerns about the fireworks at Lake Tobosoffke on July the fourth? If not, can I get a, a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
By Commissioner Allen, second by Schlesinger, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, and the resolution will be on the agenda tonight for final approval.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I ask you something on that, on Tobosoffke? Uh, didn't we pass something, uh, several years ago where we were supposed to give a, um, an admission ticket to our employees for, uh, Tobosoffke?
You know that rings a familiar bell, Commissioner Lucas, but I swear.
Mayor Pro Tim sponsored that, and I think we dropped the ball. We never, we never, um, did that. I think we ought to implement that and go ahead and give them that, um, admission card.
We'll, we'll certainly, we'll certainly follow up on that, we'll certainly.
I know we passed it, we, we.
Right. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll research, we'll research it and, and take, take action between now and then to, to give employees a, uh, admission ticket for the fireworks, okay?
Well, it was for the park, it was an admission.
It's the park.
Oh, okay.
That was what it was.
Is that, we did that in the old, in the old, uh, board, Mr. Mayor, where employees could get in.
We, we did that under this new board.
Yeah, but I said the old board.
Yeah.
Well, as I said, we'll, we'll, we'll do some research and, and see if we can do what we need to do to, to pick, pick the ball back up, uh, to use, Commissioner.
Get in free with our ID card, we just need to make sure that every employee has an ID. We will.
Okay, that's fine, however we do it, we don't have an ID card.
Please, please feel free to stop by EMA at any time, or let me know, and I'll schedule your time EMA, and we can get you an ID card printed.
Allow them to make them. Listen, listen, Elaine, I need an ID card, okay?
Uh.
Oh, thank you, Valerie, but I think I do.
Yeah, one at a time, now, may I approach him, that's you, sir?
I'm well-known from Facebook, yeah, you're right.
Of course, and, uh, uh, yeah.
And otherwise.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, one at a time, may, may I approach him?
Uh, am I hearing the commissioners say they don't have a, a card to wear?
I do, that's what I said to Elaine, we have our.
Are you, are you referring to Lake Tobosoffke?
No, no.
It's just an ID card, I don't know, that, I mean, that's what I think they were talking about.
An ID card for where?
Macon Bibb County.
I have a, I, I have a Macon Bibb County Commissioner tag.
Uh, uh, we issue, we, we gave, uh, under the Hubbard, being Hubbard administration, uh, we gave everybody an ID card for all public properties, and, uh, you, uh, may have misplaced it, but everybody along with fire re- and commissioners should have a card, I still have mine.
We'll follow up on that, and anybody that's lost it, misplaced it, we'll get them another one.
Yeah.
Uh, I need to get on.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Are you showing, are you showing in there that, uh, county attorney's supposed to sit down to, there was a mistake made on the, uh, admissions of getting in? Children under six get in free, that's where it's always been. Do you, are you showing that on tonight's agenda? Because if we let it go at seventeen, under.
Whoa, 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 that's the next item on the agenda.
You're a good man.
And the next item on the agenda, item D under, under new business is a resolution to amend, uh, resolution R dash twenty dash oh-one-three-four establishing new fees for the Lake Tobosoffke Recreation Area that's sponsored by Commissioner Allen. So Commissioner Allen, tell us what the problem was and how you fixing it with this, with this new resolution?
We, uh, what we did was that we were letting, when the, we passed the last resolution on. We, what we did was that we were letting, when the, we passed the last resolution on fees. We were fixing to let kids seventeen or young people seventeen and under get in free. Well, we would have lost so much revenue, we would have had to be coming to the county to ask the county for funds to pay for Lake Tobasoffki. We didn't want that. Children six and under, as always, are the ones that got in free, not seventeen and under, six and under. So this will correct any problems that we had with that.
Okay, uh, Michael, uh, Duke, anything you need to add about what this does? Again, the 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 heading, it just says is to to amend the the resolution establishing the fees. And so Duke or Michael?
No, it's just what the commissioner said. It just changes it so that, um, children six and under get in, get in free. They're free.
Okay.
That's all.
Other questions, comment, other questions, comments, or concerns about the resolution?
Dogs get in free too.
It gotta be under six inches.
All right, can I get a motion on on this resolution? Or do I already have one? I do. I need a, I need a motion on what to do with. So moved by by Allen and and who was my second?
Jones.
Jones, good. Okay, motion and second, uh, to approve this resolution to amend the fees. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. Ayes have it. That'll be on the agenda for final approval, uh, to tonight at the six o'clock meeting. And finally, uh, as a resolution supporting the enforcement of the executive order from the governor pertaining to the reopening of business. This is a resolution that Commissioner Lucas mentioned a few minutes ago, um, and this is sponsored by Commissioner Lucas and Commissioner Allen, both of them serve on the health board as representatives from the Macon Bibb County Commission. So Commissioner Lucas, Commissioner Allen, let me call on collectively as sponsors to explain this.
I have a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Michael, excuse me, let me, let me go to you first.
Just for for purposes of the Open Meetings Act, because this was prepared this morning and needs to be added by motion.
I'm sorry, we got to add this to the agenda for tonight. So to this, to it, can I get a motion to add this? By Allen, second by?
Schlesinger.
Schlesinger, to add this to the agenda, all in favor of adding it to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's on the agenda now. Commissioner Lucas, Commissioner Allen, uh, if you don't mind, would you explain what you're doing with this resolution?
Go ahead, Elaine.
Um, this, this, uh, resolution parallels a resolution that was passed by your Macon Bibb County Board of Health in support of enforcement of executive orders pertaining to reopening of businesses. And what it does mainly is it just, it, it, um, parallels the, the governor's executive orders and follows along with that. But it also enables the Board of Health to, uh, monitor, uh, to a greater extent. Uh, businesses, industry, others where there are employees that, uh, need to have certain protections in place. So that's really all that this does. It can't do more than the governor's executive order, but it does say that it gives, um, a little bit more leeway to our Board of Health in going into, uh, and offering assistance to different businesses in, in their, um, attempts to reopen.
John, uh, questions, comments, or concerns from other members of the commission? Hearing none, can I get a, um, a motion, uh, to do something with this, to adopt it or approve it or?
Make a motion to adopt it.
And I'll second.
Motion by Allen, second by Lucas, uh, to, uh, adopt this. Further discussion?
Uh, can I, can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
How will, how will we, uh, monitor this? That's my concern.
Well, I, you know, I'll let the attorney speak to that, but as I understand it, this is basically an endorsement and recommendation that we're making. Uh, and I'm not sure that it would come with enforcement, but if people call in, and I think there's a call-in number for people to report to the governor's hotline.
That's right.
Georgia State, Georgia State Patrol.
Right.
They mentioned the Georgia State Patrol would be is the one that's handling that. And also they asking in there that the people call in if they're reporting any kind of incidents that are taking place.
Right, so that there's your enforcement.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, they were just feeling like they needed to have the endorsement of both the Board of Health and also this commission. And we also make this information available in the form of, uh, uh, from Public Affairs, making sure that there are reminders to citizens that there, there are protections. And then it also reminds everybody that we are still in a crisis situation. There are too many people with no mask and they're too close to each other and we're still, our numbers are still going up.
And using the media also, Elaine, remember?
Um.
Using the media also.
Yeah, yeah, in getting the word out and reminding people. And we think that the mayor ought to, on a regular basis, kind of remind everybody too, because there are really too many people walking around who think that this thing is over.
All right. Further questions, comments, or concerns? If not, got a motion and second to approve the resolution, all in favor of signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, uh, and that'll be on the agenda tonight for for final adoption. Um, that is the end of the agenda at this point, uh, for the pre-commission meeting. Anybody else got any questions, comments, or concerns about what we're fixing to do at the six o'clock meeting? Uh, if if not, uh, I'm going to declare this, uh, to be in recess. Do not hang up. Let your phone keep running on the Zoom. Uh, but we'll recess for ten minutes, take a comfort break and be back at six o'clock and we'll start the meeting at six o'clock. And Rabbi Schlesinger, can I call on you, give you a heads up, call on you for a prayer to start us off?
That's awesome.
They're good. Yeah, yeah, I was muted. I'm sorry. But yeah, I'll be glad to do that.
That'll be, that'll be great. All right, we're in recess for ten minutes and we'll reconvene in ten minutes. Uh, it is now six o'clock. Like to call to order this regular, uh, commission meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission for Tuesday, June the sixteenth. Um, we have a quorum of commissioners, uh, in attendance now. Uh, and at this point, uh, I'd like to call on Commissioner Schlesinger to to open us with an invocation. Commissioner Schlesinger?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, let us pray. Our God and Creator, as we come before you again to do the business of this commission and Macon Bibb County. We gratefully acknowledge that you are the Lord our God, the God of all people, the God of all generations. So we thank you. We sing your praises for our lives that are in your hands, for our souls that are ever in your keeping, for the signs of your presence that we encounter every day and for all your gifts at all times, morning, noon, and night. In our world that's torn by violence and pain, our world that's far from wholeness and peace, our world that's waiting still to be redeemed, we pray that the day will come when justice will roll down like waters and righteousness as a mighty stream. We then pray that peace and goodwill will obtain among the inhabitants of our community, our state, our land, and that belief in you will continue to spread as many blessings among us, exalting us all in righteousness. Amen.
Amen. Now, thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Um, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, minutes of the public hearing, uh, on the FY twenty-one budget, uh, and the pre-commission meeting we had and the regular commission meeting, all three on June the second have been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections we need to make to those minutes? And if not, can I get a motion to approve?
Some move.
Got a motion by Win, second by Schlesinger to approve the minutes of those three meetings, all in favor. Is there further discussion? Got a motion by Winn, second by Schlesinger to approve the minutes of those three meetings. All in favor? Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval of those three sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and those three sets of minutes are approved. Next, reports from our standing committees. And I'm going to ask the clerk to read the minutes of each meeting and then for the chair of the committee to give us any additional comments that you'd like to make. So I'm giving her a minute to pull them up. And first is Operations and Finance Committee. Madam Clerk, will you read the minutes of that meeting?
Yes, sir. The Operation and Finance Committee held their regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, June 9th and took the following action. The committee agreed to the purchase and sale with Yancey Brothers in the amount of ninety-four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars for a Skid steer twenty-twenty rotary motor with funds from the Solid Waste Management Fund, Solid Waste Landfield machinery line item. The committee also approved the submission of the Macon Bibb County Five-Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element to the Middle Georgia Regional Commission for Compliance Review. The committee approved six change orders to the construction contract between Macon Bibb County and International City Builders in the amount of sixty-six thousand, four dollars and two cents for additional improvements to Henderson Memorial Stadium Project to be paid from capital improvement funds. They approved a budget amendment transferring five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars from various line items in the solicitor's office budget to the transfer to capital improvement funds to pay for additional costs related to the purchase of a new vehicle. And this concludes the report of the Operation and Finance Committee.
Chairman Watkins, any additional comments that you want to make?
I concur.
Very good. Thank you for that report in concurrence. The next Economic and Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, can you read those minutes for us?
Yes, sir. The Economic and Community Development Committee held their regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, June 9th and took the following action. The committee approved the appointment of Russell Nelson to the Bibb County Civil Service Board. The committee also approved an amendment to the 2015-2020 Consolidated Plan and 2019 Action Plan for the Community Development and Housing Programs between Macon Bibb County and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorized the mayor to accept Community Development Block Grant Funds and Emergency Grant Solution Funds from the CARES Act. And this concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Chairman Lucas, any additional comments or information you'd like to provide from Economic and Community Development?
We have one additional item, which is the resolution to confirm the appointment of Dennis J. Hagerman to the Bibb County Civil Service Board.
Right, okay. I'll ask the clerk to make that change then in those minutes and add him as an approval because we approved him. Just asked that he be at the pre-commission meeting for any additional questions or comments. Okay? Good. Anything else? Hearing none. Thank you for that report, Chairman Lucas. And next is a report from Public Safety. We did not have a meeting of public safety, and that takes us to Facilities and Engineering. Would you read the minutes of the Facilities and Engineering Report?
Yes, sir. The Facilities and Engineering Committee held their regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, June 9th and took the following act. They authorized the mayor to execute transportation contract to accept CARES Act funding for the Macon Town Airport. They also authorized the mayor to execute two change orders for the construction contract with Warrens and Associates in the amount of ninety-five thousand, forty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents for improvements of the Lake Tobysavki Ranger Station Project to be paid from 2018 SWAT proceeds, recreation, Lake Tobysavki property line items, and heard an update report from Cassiter concerning the remaining funding in the Blight Bond Funds. And this concludes the report of Facilities and Engineering.
Chairman Jones, any questions, comments, additions, other comments you could make?
He's muted.
You need to unmute yourself. If you can hear me, you need to unmute if you've got any comments. If not, just shake your head. You're still muted. There you go.
Now I'm unmuted.
Right.
My additional comments would be the ninety-five thousand includes the relocation of the guardhouse, the widening of the road, utilities relocation, and other improvements such as that. Just to give a few more details.
Right. Thank you, Chairman Jones. Appreciate that report. Next, moving on to the consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda for approval tonight. The first, both of these consent agenda items, alcohol license applications, are accompanied by the necessary documentation. First, from the sheriff's office that a satisfactory background check was done on the applicant. Second, from the Business Development Services Office to say that the appropriate fees have been tendered for the alcoholic beverages to be sold. Third, a certificate from the Planning and Zoning Commission of the zoning compliance for the location. Next would be the confirmation of, from the county engineer, that the location meets all the necessary distance requirements and the, from other schools, churches, and that, this kind of thing, and a copy of the ad that ran in the paper. The first application, license application was filed by Palava Ben Patel for the business name of Millerfield Thirty-One Seventy LLC, located at Thirty-One Seventy Millerfield Road in Macon. And that is for beer and wine sales to go from that location. The next item is from Melinda Glenn. The business name is Public Supermarkets. It is the new store at Fifty-Five, Fifty-Five Eighty-One Thomaston Road in Macon, and that is for beer and wine sales, package sales to go at that location. The Committee of the Whole recommends approval of those two license applications. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the issuance of those two licenses signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and those two license applications will be issued as requested. The next, as we, item on our agenda is old business. And the first item of old business is whether or not to override the mayor's veto of the ordinance that was adopted recently for the alcohol license applications. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
Okay, I apologize. I was muted. An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend those provisions of Chapter Four of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances relating to consideration of alcohol license applications for persons accused of but not convicted of criminal offenses and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Respectfully, on the grounds that we, as a commission, have the discretion.
Muted. You're muted. Start over.
Okay. I respectfully vetoed this ordinance because we currently, the commission currently has the discretion to consider or not consider whether pending charges should be taken into consideration in the issuance of an alcohol license. In fact, the commission voted at the same meeting to issue a license where the applicant had pending charges against them. But the commission heard other evidence and had the discretion and chose to go ahead and issue the resolution. So number one, I hate to see you lose that discretion. Exercise it judiciously. But the second and more item of concern to me was that violence on the premises, disorderly conduct, calls for police assistance, this, that, and the other, none of that could be taken into consideration unless there was a conviction of someone for that offense. And that, I thought, ran counter to a lot of concerns that I hear from commissioners about, you know, violence on the property, people hanging around and this, that, and the other, and requests for the sheriff to come out and so on and so forth. Well, if you have to have a conviction before you can take that into consideration, I thought was, was bad as well. And, and finally, in this day and age when so much is on videotape, store surveillance cameras or this or that or the other, you can have some pretty damning video evidence, but if there's not an actual conviction, you can't take that into consideration. I just thought that we, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. While I'm not saying that we can't improve the ordinance, I, I thought that the changes that were made divest the commission of the discretion which it has shown. It knows how to use and also prevents you from taking into consideration. So I respectfully vetoed that. Mr. Attorney, I think it takes six votes under the charter to override that veto.
That's correct, Mayor.
That would, that would be the question then. Shall, shall the commission override? If you want to override, you would vote yes. If you do not want to override the veto, you would vote no. I'm not sure. I'm going to turn this over to the attorney's office right now, but first I want to call on commissioners for discussion. Is there any confusion or does anybody want to voice an opinion one way or the other? May I approach them? This was actually your effort, and I, I call on you for whatever comments you wanted to make, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and I met last week and to have this discussion. He had informed me and shared his thoughts about the language change that he wanted to adjust in the bill, although the state is in line with the state statute and ordinance already. I don't have any heartburns over it. At some point, I mean, we'll move forward with, you know, I, I'll vote to override. But although regardless, I'll move to.
Let's just leave it alone.
Right. What I'm saying is I'm willing to, at some point, come back regardless if, if, if we override it or not and, and work, work with him on that language to change it. And I'm, I'm aware of the language as far as that discretion, and I have no issue, no heartburn, but I will, you know, still stand by my, my, my ordinance. So I just want to share that with the commissioners that supported it as well. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Winn, got you. Commissioner Winn, I got you next.
Yes, sir. I, I support. I mean, I, I do want to over, I don't want to override your veto. I think that we have the discretion. You've already said that, and I don't want to take away what rights we have as a, as a local community. I know that it may be more in line to go with the Georgia regulations, but I'd like to have our own discretion here for the reasons you mentioned and you had mentioned to us in your, in your letter.
Other questions, comments, or concerns? If, if not, again, if you want to override the veto, you would vote yes to override it. If you do not, you would vote no.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something? Just on a parliamentary standpoint, the, oh, sorry, the veto right now stands to over make a motion in a second, and then you have a vote, but you need a motion in a second to even get the override on the table. Right now, the veto stands. So to override, there needs to be a motion in a second. If there's not, then the veto will stand.
Is there a motion in second then to override the veto?
Motion to override the veto.
Got a motion by my approach then to override the veto.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I have a question. I don't.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner Bibb. I mean, it's, it's.
I'm, somehow I don't clearly understand what's going on. I mean, last time when this came up, what was the vote? What did we vote to do? We voted not to give the license?
No, sir. You, you actually voted to, to issue the license that was under consideration and, and to disregard the pending charges. Even though there had been no, no conviction, et cetera, you, you decided not to take those pending charges into consideration, and you issued the license.
So, so what are we overriding?
I vetoed the, the new ordinance that would require a conviction before you can take things into consideration. I, I vetoed that so that it gives the commission the discretion to consider or not to consider pending charges.
Okay, I, I, I just didn't remember that. We passed something saying that that last part you said about.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I think you need to be clear that this has nothing to do with the issuance of a particular license. This is just the actual ordinance.
That is true. That is true.
With the state order, and I don't know why you just won't say that or Michael won't say it. This is the same ordinance on the state, and we were just coming in line with the state. But the mayor feels like it would just be discretion. And when we talked about more detailed things that he thought that this would prevent, and number one was a conviction. And, and he suggested that if I want to remove the language. But I just don't know how you remove the language, and I didn't inquire about how you move, remove certain language out if the full commission had already passed the, the ordinance. And I don't know how you would do that, and maybe attorney, you can answer it. Because I mean, if, if he wants to, if you want to withdraw the veto, Mr. Mayor, then we could just work on changing the language. I have no issue with the language. Or if it can be done, because I think, you know, I, I agree with you on your language change. And so however you want to do it, I'm fine with it either way.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So from a parliamentary standpoint, the veto stands. So is the ordinance passed by the commission is not, not in effect. It's not going to be the law unless this commission overrides presently a motion. It needs a second for, for further action. If it does not get a second, it fails and the veto stands now. That doesn't mean you can't come back and work on a new ordinance later and present it to the commission, so.
And re, and re-pass it.
That's right. So if you're still, if there's a motion, but it needs a second. If it doesn't get a second, the motion fails and the veto stands. That's where we are.
So is there, is there a second to the motion to override?
I will, I will un, uh, remove my motion.
You withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay. Then the veto stands.
All right. So if the veto stands, we'll move on to, to item B. So the, the veto is not overridden, and we'll move on to item B. Item B is an appointment to the Civil Service Board. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption. Have to give her a minute to haul that notebook around.
Thank you. A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to confirm the appointment of Russell Nelson to the Bibb County Civil Service Board and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the appointment of Russell Nelson to the Civil Service Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. And next is a companion to make another appointment to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to confirm the appointment of Dennis J. Hagerman to the Bibb County Civil Service Board and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval, and that was seconded by the Committee of the Whole. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to amend the novation agreement for the use of the Virgil Power School property and Fulton Baptist Church building. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission. A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to novation on the transfer of Virgil Powers School property to the Urban Development Authority to expressly allow for renovating the interior of Fulton Baptist Church and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, committee of the whole recommends approval. Uh, and in further answer, I would say that at the public hearing today, we had a good good public hearing, and Commissioner Lucas, thank you for being the instigator of that public hearing. It was a good public hearing, and we heard from several folks. But in the interim, we have this letter from Walter Cooper to say that they will not use the church building for residential units as they had planned, but instead they will add $50,000 to their budget to put a new roof on it and remodel the exterior of the building and allow it to continue to be used uh by Fulton Baptist Church. So I I think that's a win-win-win situation. And uh, the as I say, the committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
I have one question. When you say um um do do renovation to the exterior, uh, I'm I'm not sure what that means. I mean...
Well, can you put that...
Repair and make it, improve it, you mean?
Yes, yes, sir. That's exactly right. Can you put that picture back up of the church? Look on the upper right-hand side, and you see that piece of the soffit that's actually falling off?
Right.
Yeah, the building is in pretty bad shape and needs some exterior renovation and and assistance and a new roof on it to stop some of the leaks.
Yeah, I just want to make sure what you meant by renovation. As you could say renovation could mean you're gonna brick the outside.
I know.
Dollars are not enough for that.
Yeah, well, I, you know, good point, good point. But no, they're they're trying to restore the the outside to be consistent with the start renovation.
Restore is a good word, yeah.
Yes, sir. And put and put a new roof on it. Further discussion?
Yeah. So I I understand. Let me sure. Yeah, I understand you've been trying to move the Virgil Powers School for a while, but we are being more than generous to a project that must be very tight. In order to make this project work, we are providing the building at $100 a month with all of the facilities for $100 a month, and then providing a low interest with 1% loan or another half a million dollars to make this project work. That's in the past, um, we didn't need to do that. And I understand that it's about the application process, but a strong project, when it comes to these ship over and low income tax credit competitions, do not require our money and particularly money at a low interest rate in order for it to be more successful. These projects are supposed to stand on their own. I give you an example of Miller School, which we developed in partnership. We did not give them cold, hard cash. We developed the roadwork around it. We developed developed the existing area. Same thing with Tindall Heights. We developed the sidewalks to make that project work. This project, just off the back of napkin work, we got us a problem, and we committed money with very, because we excited about the process, we almost gave away the oldest church in our community that was still being occupied because we were excited to finish something quickly. We gotta sit back. There's a lot going on. We're avoiding public comments and trying to find ways to do it because we rushing, and rushing is how you get in trouble. I'm gonna be voting no to all of these because I've got concerns that I've mentioned several times. And I thank y'all for fixing the problem with the church, but that's not it. Thank you.
Yeah. The only only thing I would say in response, Commissioner Watkins, uh, is that workforce housing is very difficult because of the reduced rates that they charge for people that are employed, not otherwise disabled, or this, that, or the other. Um, and for them to have 11 units available at 50% of AMI, which I think is adjusted median income, or average median, no, would be adjusted median income, and and 41 units at 60%, they've got to have help on the front end. Uh, and this is why workforce housing is so difficult to to put in, and I'm very proud of us stepping up and making...
Workforce housing, people over the age of... So is workforce housing for senior citizens?
Well, it's, well, it depends. 55 years old. I mean, you got 80, 80, 80% of the units have to have somebody who's 55 years old. I'm 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 still working, and I'm 72.
Okay, all right. Valid point.
Yeah. Anyhow, uh, uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the first of these three resolutions, uh, to uh amend amend the novation agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Got got one, one note, one no, so that ought to be uh eight, eight, eight to one. The the second companion resolution is for revolving loan funds for this project. Then I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize a loan in the amount of $149,073.60 in revolving loan funds to assist Hawthorne Commons Limited Partnership in developing the proposed multifamily housing for older persons' tax credit development in the former Virgil Powers School and Fulton Baptist Church Buildings on Hawthorne Street between Second Street and Third Street in Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, to be known as Hawthorne Commons, to be secured by a deed to secure debt conveying said property and for other purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Got got one, one no, so eight, eight to one. And then the final resolution is uh allocation of home funds. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to provide $426,000 to Hawthorne Commons Limited Partnership to be paid out of the Economic and Community Development Home Grant Funds upon receipt of an allocation of housing tax credit from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for the Hawthorne Commons Development Project and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Uh, got got one no, so eight, eight to one. The resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, item G, um, is a a resolution um to amend the contract with Warren and Associates for additional improvements at Lake Tobasowski, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute two change orders to the construction contract between Macon-Bibb County and Warren Associates Incorporated in the total amount of $95,049.58 for additional improvements to the Lake Tobasowski Ranger Station project to be paid from 2018 Splotz Proceeds Recreation Lake Tobasowski Property Line item and for other lawful purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is is a uh a resolution to approve an amendment to the consolidated plan uh for community development and housing programs, um, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve an amendment to the 2015-2020 Consolidated Plan and 2019 Action Plan for Community Development and Housing Programs between Macon-Bibb County and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and to authorize the mayor to accept community development block grant funds and emergency grant solution funds from the CARES Act.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is is item I, um, and it is a resolution to execute a a agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation to accept CARES Act funding for the downtown airport, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the, excuse me, a resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a Georgia Department of Transportation contract to accept CARES Act funding for the Macon Downtown Airport and for other lawful purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, uh, next is a resolution to purchase a skid steer, a skid steer rotary mower, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sell agreement with Yancey Brothers Company in the amount of $94,130 for the purchase of a skid steer 2020 road...
Easy Bill presents the 10 best base seats...
...supposed to be paid from the solid waste, solid waste landfill machinery line item and for other lawful purposes.
Wow, there's a picture of a skid steer, a skid steer with a rotary mower. There it is. Operations, Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is a resolution concerning the Macon-Bibb County Five-Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Commission approving the submission of the Macon-Bibb County Five-Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element to the Middle Georgia Regional Commission for Compliance Review and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is uh item L, um, and that is a a series of six change orders to the construction contract uh on Henderson Stadium, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute six change orders to the construction contract between Macon-Bibb County and International City Builders Incorporated in the total amount of $66,004.2 for additional improvements to the Henderson Memorial Stadium Stadium Project to be paid from capital improvement funds and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, uh, next is a budget amendment to allow the solicitor's office to buy a a new vehicle, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment transferring $5,850 from various line items in the solicitor's office budget to the transfer to capital improvement fund to pay additional costs related to the purchase of a new vehicle and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is an ordinance changing the the day that we celebrate July the 4th this year to July the 3rd, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing a one-time suspension of the holiday pay schedule as designated in Section 5-04 of the Macon-Bibb County Government Policy and Procedures Manual regarding the 2020 Independent Day Holiday by amending the date of recognition for the holiday to be Friday, July 3, 2020, and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is item O, uh, which is a resolution to provide for fireworks display at Lake Tobasowski for July the 4th, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Munro Lynn Pyrotechnics LLC for the fireworks show at Lake Tobasowski on July the 4th, 2020, to be paid from the Lake Tobasowski Fund and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is item P, uh, which is a a resolution to amend a previous resolution establishing the fees at Lake Tobasowski, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend Resolution R-20-0134 establishing new fees for the Lake Tobasowski Recreation Area and for other lawful purposes.
A committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is a a resolution uh to support the enforcement uh of the executive orders of Governor Kemp pertaining to the reopening of business from the COVID-19 uh virus. Uh, this is sponsored by Commissioners Lucas and Allen, and and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission supporting the enforcement of executive orders pertaining to the reopening of business and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That's all of the old business items that I've got. Uh, we have several items of new business that have been prepared and sent down. Um, but as always, check the agenda that'll come out on Friday for uh the full um new business to be considered at the committee meetings next Tuesday, uh, June the 23rd. The first item, item A, under new business, is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Forensic Firearms of Middle Georgia Incorporated to provide peer review and confirmation by microscopic examination of all current crime leads in Macon-Bibb County using the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network System in the amount of $30,000 with federally funded Project Safe Neighborhood Grant Funds. I'm gonna refer that to the Public Safety uh Committee. Uh, item B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sales agreement with Williams Communication in the amount of $74,743.22 for the purchase of critical spare parts and accessories to be paid from the General Fund Computers and Hardware IT Line item. I'm gonna refer this to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with Williams Communication in the amount of $53,193.55 for the purchase of batteries and power supply adapters to be paid from the General Fund Computer Hardware IT Line item. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Peach State Ford LLC for $71,856.77 for the purchase of a new or used 2018 newer Ford F-450 Super Duty truck with funds to be paid from the Capital Improvement Fund Vehicle and Equipment Maintenance Vehicle Line item. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute two purchase agreements with MHC Kenworth LLC, each in the amount of $211,350 for a total amount of $422,700 for the purchase of two 2021... twenty-twenty-one Kenworth T-eight-eighty trucks with a McNeilus thirty-two-yard rear loader body to be paid from the Solid Waste Management Fund, Solid Waste Landfill Machinery and Equipment Line Item. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a professional services agreement with Widener and Associates for architectural and civil site design for the Bloomfield Athletic Complex renovation in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars to be paid from twenty-eighteen Splotch Proceeds Parks and Recreation Bloomfield Line Item. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee, unless there's a protest that it ought to go to Operations and Finance. This is what got me in trouble last. What got me in trouble last time, trying to spread this stuff around. So I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with the Sutton Corporation in the amount of five hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars for the purchase of a triple combination fire pumper to be paid from the Capital Improvement Fund Fire Department Vehicles Line Item. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item H is a resolution to dedicate and name the extension. Uh-oh, somebody needs to mute the phone. Somebody needs to mute the phone. Item H is a resolution to dedicate and name the extension of Little Richard Penniman Boulevard from Tale Fair Street to Second Street as a Little Richard Penniman Boulevard. In other words, just a continuation of the same street, same name. But this is a brand-new street that's never been there before, and we've got to officially name it. So this is a proposal to name it the, the same as the, the other part of it, Little Richard Penniman Boulevard. I'm gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item I is the last one, and it's a resolution requesting the issuance of a formal procurement solicitation in order to retain professional services for the completion of an enterprise-wide equity assessment and the provision of policy recommendations based on the findings of that assessment. This is sponsored by Commissioner Watkins, and I'm gonna refer that to the Committee of the Whole, because none of us understand what it is. But I'm sure Commissioner Watkins is gonna tell us. That's all of the new business that we, that has come down thus far as other items come down. Last, again, be sure and check the agenda that comes out on Friday afternoon. Also, please remember that we are going to try to have an in-person meeting next Tuesday. If you have concerns about your attendance at that meeting, then we'll go try to work out how you can call into that meeting, and, and the final details of that will be coming out with the agenda on Friday afternoon, so that if you don't feel comfortable, if you've got an underlying condition and still under the protection of the Governor's Executive Order, and you, you can call in, but if you want to come down and be with us. Also, let me say that we have not been able to have an executive session on Zoom. They're very difficult to do on Zoom. You know, you have to dial out, dial in, dial change, back and forth, this, that, and that. We hadn't had an executive session in two months. We are going to try to have an executive session this next Tuesday, and I anticipate starting at nine o'clock and having an executive session that will last two hours. There's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of stuff that we need to talk to you about in executive session. So if you can't be here in person, you'll certainly want to dial in and listen in to the executive session, and we'll make arrangements for you to do that. Any other points, privileges, questions, comments, or concerns? Commissioner Nguyen, I see you waving your hand at me.
Yes, sir. Thank you. First, that, that executive session, that will be at the end of our regular meeting, is that right? Our committee meeting?
No, ma'am, we've got, we, no, ma'am, with the beginning, because we're gonna start off, if we got out of town. We've got some people that are coming, need to be on the schedule at a certain time.
All right. What I wanted to say, there are two different things. I wanted to congratulate my fellow commissioners on their reelection. And I wanted, having said that, I wanted also to say something about the election we just went through last Tuesday. We voted for the first time on our new voting machines. I think there were some issues, obviously, at the beginning, but I think it smoothed out by mid-morning, as I understand it. I want to congratulate and thank the Board of Elections for the hard work they put into this and for the people that work the polls. Those are, that's long hours for them to do that. And, and they've worked all week, making sure and trying to correct our mistakes. We failed them because we, as a public, voted by absentee ballot. Some of us didn't do those ballots right, and they've had to count, recount, I think, ten thousand ballots, which is delayed an official count. So I want to congratulate them on a job well done and their hard work. And the second thing I want to talk about, and it is not as quite as pleasant, but you know, there've been some Facebook things out there lately, and, and I'm not a big Facebook person, but some of the Facebook issues have been, I would consider, volatile and even racist, and that's, let's, let's, folks, we, we, as the commissioners of this community, should have higher standards to live by, and I think we should rise above such inappropriate actions and comments. And I think that doing that, we will, we, having these inappropriate comments does not bring unity to our community, and it does not make, make and move forward. So please, let's be professionals as they expect us to be and watch our comments. I know that, that personal Facebooks are personal, but they're not. They're public. And when the public sees, I've gotten calls, emails, and texts about this, and I just really think we ought to rise above this.
Very good. I, I do think, one other thing I, I didn't mention that I wanted to is that I think we're scheduled to have a work session in addition next week. And I think you're gonna want to be here because these are the design people for the improvements to the auditorium. So I'm sure you're gonna want to know what they're doing, and Janice is gonna have lunch for you here. If, for those, for those of you who are here, gonna have lunch, and then the work session. Commissioner Lucas, got you over your hand up.
Yeah, when we have our, that breakfast, it looks like with an executive session, a lot of us don't get anything. Could you have coffee and juice and?
Yes, ma'am.
I can get you whatever you want. I'll get y'all some Chick-fil-A biscuits.
That would be great. That would be great.
Last meeting of the, of the budget year.
Yeah, that is great. And one, one final thing, I want to congratulate those who have finished their, who have finished their races as well. And I also want to say that my mother was Ella Huckabee. My father was Leonard Huckabee. And they are the only ones that can tell me what to do with my own personal life. Not any of you, and certainly not you, Valerie.
That's right. We, you know, we, we're right, we're right above this. Any further business to come before us?
Ms. Chairman, I just want to make a comment. I'm not sure how it's gonna work out for me next week. I'll be in touch with somebody, maybe in touch with you, and see what can be worked out, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, we're gonna try to make a, a phone call in available for you and, and so that you'll be able to hear. So I hope you can join us one way or another, either in person or, or by phone.
Okay, one way or another, yeah.
Okay, very good, very good.
I forgot, I forgot, and David Lucas.
I was gonna say, they can tell you what to do. All right, we got that, we got that on recorded now.
I'm not so sure he can tell you what to do. You might allow him to take it.
All right, on that happy note. Good night, everybody.
Yeah, bye.